It is 6:30. We will go ahead and call the meeting to an end. One little note before we get started, we are going to swap items three and four around. We'll hit our Parkway discussion before we go into the rezone for Mr. Wilker, just so everybody's aware of that. First item on the agenda this evening is a review and approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. If anybody has any additions or corrections, if they'd be kind enough to read them into the record. If not, I would be looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. On our favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Put care of the minutes. Parkway discussion.
So, what you have in front of you is a general development plan that was approved in 2014 and it eliminated the discussion of a Parkway. That would have gone from roughly where 13th Avenue Northeast. It's hit 16 and then would kind of continue out to the county road as development happened in the northeast portion of the city. In your comprehensive plan, in your transportation plan, that Parkway has reappeared and the developer is interested in continuing to develop lots which are in the green. And we had a preliminary discussion with Rich Massey about how the Parkway would come back into any future development. So, this is what we talked to Rich about and I bet Rich has upped the stakes.
I'm Rich Massey from Massey Survey Engineering here on behalf of Carter Blaine. To give you a little history, back in 99, we did seven different layouts of that whole area. General Development Plan, then brought the planning and zoning and let them pick out which one they wanted. Then, this is a modified version of it where we eliminated that Parkway in 2014, I believe it was. So, and then we just, it wasn't going to be a Parkway anymore, but then we just kind of reconfigured the lots or whatever. Got the narrower roads. Then it now it has come to life again because of whatever's going on. So, when we talked with Teresa and Brandon, what we talked about was just keeping it further to the east over adjacent to the pond, the regional pond that's there. And then come perpendicular across the creek and then go back out there to the east, that property of east for future development. Main reason that the Parkway from 99 to 2014 got eliminated is because the railroad crossing got eliminated and that's the way we brought it down there. The most western street that isn't developed right now, if you see that, we had brought that down and then we're going to come, you know, as perpendicular as we could to the railroad and then out down to 34. Once that stopped, once the railroad crossing went away, then we had to redo this kind of configuration here. And I don't know.
Yeah, so I think they're just looking to find out if that is an acceptable way for us to move forward to plan for future development that allows the developer to get started.
Because Carter's like to be digging by next spring again. It's pretty much out of lots right now until the property to the north of this, something happens with that or whatever is going there, so.
I see Colin has a few notes.
Oh, I was just thinking of notes.
Oh, okay, about what you're saying. Okay, all right.
So, you're looking at two different development areas on both sides of the track?
Well, what he'd like to do right now is stay north of the creek and get that finished off first.
I mean, I think it's 7-4 that you're looking for that has the Parkway on it. So, this shows like really getting it tight in the corner so they don't have to do lots on both sides that back off to it?
Excuse me, that was the thing with the Parkway is that we couldn't have any. We had to double load the lots because we weren't allowed access onto the Parkway.
So, are you looking at putting in the 8th Street also or is that future behind just what's highlighted?
What he would like to do first is stay on that extension, I think that's 3rd.
Third, yeah.
Yeah, after your 3rd Street.
And then continue it out to the east until where that Parkway was and then probably go to the north and the east after that. Stay with this, excuse me, probably the 14 to 18 lots at a time depending on.
Yes, so 8th Street going east most likely won't open up until we do some stormwater work on the property that it's running through on this diagram. We need some storm work in there before it actually goes any further either.
So, this would eliminate that 13th Avenue crossing of the river?
Yep. Yeah, just crossing once is going to be enough on that expense wise and everything, so.
I think we all know what's going to happen someday eventually. We need to get something going for this direction to be able to develop on the south side of the creek. Because I think eventually that next township crossing for the railroad is going to be discontinued.
To the east rail.
Right, the railroad doesn't want any more crossings and they have to. I think it's a direction we're going to have to do it someday.
So, the next thing we'll see then is like a new general development plan? Is that what you're thinking or just bring us a flat?
Well, I was going to bring in, I was hoping we could maybe bring in a preliminary flat.
Flat, okay.
Because we'll have the pond resized by then and everything, you know, to make sure that we've got no opportunity we're going to need for the rest of it for the pond.
Are you all right with that? If you come back with a preliminary flat based on this, okay.
No, we're doing that.
Perfect, that's it.
Do it.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Next item this evening, public hearing, Wilker landscaping rezone request.
Yes, so you do have the application, a site plan and evidence of ownership in your packet. Those are the items required for submission. And then also, I did provide some notes from your zoning amendments. They need to reflect changes in the goals of the city, be reflected in the comprehensive plan or reflected in changes in conditions in the city. And then in regard to your comprehensive plan, I did provide some notations about where that area is covered under your future land use, your neighborhood design principles and then your future developments. And those page references are there and there are copies of the comp plan if you need to reference them.
Thank you. With that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you have any thoughts or comments, I would ask that you stay on topic. We are discussing the rezone here. If you'd be kind enough to share your name and address with Linda before you begin.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Mark Yutz from Rochester, Minnesota, La Cumbre Buena Yutz. My address is 21 First Street Southwest. I live out in Rochester Township. It's always great to be in Casson. I got to tell you, I think you've got the best meat store in town with the Urban Super. My kids love it when we go up to the State Fair. So, I'm here on behalf of Wilker retaining laws and powers and papers and looking to support the application for the zoning amendment and the rezoning to M1. It was referenced in your packet documents. I would refer your attention to a letter that Jason had submitted to you all on June 5th. I don't know if you, but in that letter, starting on page five, Jason describes we set forth the findings in support of the application. In essence, really, as we all know, Jason here has been in business for over 19 years, for over 19 years. And at this site, came to the site in 2009, so almost in excess of a decade there. And a company that has employed dozens of people throughout those years and over a dozen are employed here now in the business. When we look at what the standard of review is in any rezoning, the standard, the legal standard of review is whether it's appropriate, given the changes in the goals and the policies of the city that have occurred and changes in the conditions of the city. And I think we've alluded to some, but I'll just go on to specify just a bit. In the area where the business is located, it really is right adjoining County Road 21, which is a heavily truck traffic area. It is an area that has a 50 mile an hour per limit, speed limit, indicating that it may not be ideal, ideally situated for residential development. This is a property that we're looking to have be M1. It's our understanding the only other M1 would be the CH elevator, CHS elevator. Which with respect to the actual standard or review in terms of the goals and policies of the city, I have to say quite amazing what like we've all seen in southern Minnesota, the growth. My notes showed in 2009, the population of Casson was a little over 5,500 people. And today it's over 6,400 people. So, that's a 15% increase in growth. So, can certainly understand the modifications of goals and policies of the city to accommodate the changes and conditions of the city. And one of those goals, as I understand, is a goal that I work with clients on a daily basis and that is growth for enhancing and retaining existing businesses and keeping in place what we call base jobs. And what can we do to maintain base jobs in our community? And what can we do to grow local businesses? So, not just an attraction, but if we've got a gem in our community, if we have an employer in our community, what do we need to do to give them a basis to continue to operate? And so, that's really what we're here today to talk about is what we could do for Wilker retaining laws and payers to continue their business and frankly, continue the growth. We all know there has been a high turnover of local businesses. Yet, I'm mindful with the real estate that I do, I look at your building permits. I see in 2017, you had 52 building permits issued in 2017. 2018, a nice, a nice steady double digit, but it was 37 housing permits in 2018. You can tell me where you are in 2019, but I think the goal remains for the city here is what can we do to maintain the growth of our community and what can we do to support local businesses? We do believe that the M1 is compatible with the surrounding area. For nearly 10 years, Jason has operated this business pursuant to this 2010 CUP permit. And with this rezoning application, he does not intend to add to the existing traffic to the area. We believe that there is sufficient compatible or separate distinct screening for the adjacent residential zone areas. The structure that's currently in place, Jason intends to improve that structure to make it look even better, to use it to house his equipment. He explained in some of, in the letter that he sent to you that his insurer even looks for getting equipment with some shelter and would reduce his insurance rates. So, we don't think that the, we believe that he'll continue to improve the appearance of the operation and does not, would not, in fact, would be an improvement to the adjacent residential properties. I am mindful that here, there was a city, a public hearing in September of last year on the CUP and I understand there were dozens of people that stood in here or were here present in support of that CUP for Jason. It was referenced, the 2018 comp plan, chapter five, that the city has recognized one of the needs is to retain existing businesses and facilitate growth. We truly think this does just that. With the existing land use, the property has long operated as a business employing and serving the residents of the city. Let me be specific to that. As we referenced before, these housing counts have been double digits. The housing permits have been double digits. Jason's business not only attracts customers and taxpayers in the Casson area, but frankly, throughout all of Dodge County. And let's keep the business here in our local, in our local area. We believe the use is consistent with the purpose of the ordinance. It's a low intensity use. There will be and continues to be substantial green space throughout the area. I would just call your attention to some other communities that might have some landscaping business nearby residential. Let me just call your attention to a couple. Sargent's off of Second Street in Rochester. As you leave Sargent's, as you leave that driveway right to the north, there's a residential community. Sargent's North, when you go north on 75th, where Sargent's is, across the street is some of the higher, some very good homes. So, we think that this use, existing use is complementary. We don't think that there's a conflict with the comprehensive plan of the city. Again, the city's plan to retain and grow local businesses, to take economically distressed businesses and convert them into economically feasible businesses. We think this will only help. The traffic generated can be safely accommodated on existing planned street systems. Earlier, I said, we don't think that this amended change would greatly increase the traffic. We think that there's existing infrastructure there to take care of that. There have been adequate measures taken to prevent or disturb otherwise the neighboring properties. Let me be specific on that. Each year, Jason has planted trees. He has, as you may know, he has a berm and on that berm, he's been planting trees. He expects to do more of that, is to continue that custom and practice that he has in annually planting trees. We believe there's adequate utilities that are already in place. We think there's adequate parking, drainage control. And drainage control may even be enhanced by the additional planning. But we believe those adequate utilities are in place. So, further, we don't see that this impedes the surrounding property. The use will be entirely on his property, allowing orderly development of surrounding properties. The proposed amendment would not impact the use or enjoyment of adjoining properties. And we don't believe that this will disrupt the character of the neighborhood. Again, I look at what a citizen Jason has been. When I come to the community, just yesterday, I was at a fireman's picnic in a township, not here, but nearby. And one of the reasons for those township picnics for the fire department or what is to support the community. Jason reminds me of what he's done for the fire department, where he's allowed the fire department to do training on the site. He also reminds me of how he does support the relief fund by hiring the fire departments here and in Manorville to help water his operation, his trees. He does also, in the past, he's provided trees to park and erect for the street project. So, again, let me just restate, you have an ongoing, current, existing business that is looking to grow and is looking to maintain its purpose. And we would respectfully ask for your support tonight and would welcome any questions you may have. As you see, Jason is here as well as my colleague Julie Nagorski. And I know there's others in the room here in support of this amendment to the zoning. Those in support of this zoning would they please stand at this time? Thank you. So, again, I want to thank you for your time and would be happy to answer any questions. All right, again, thank you for your consideration.
Hi, Julie Nagorski with DeWitt, co-counsel for Jason Wilker. I just briefly wanted to call your attention to exhibit 20 that we submitted. This is an enlargement of that. What I think is key about this is that it shows that the city makes requests of Mr. Wilker and Mr. Wilker tries to fulfill the city's requests. It asks for drawings, he submits drawings. It asks for a subdivision application, he submits the subdivision application. What the city wants, Mr. Wilker attempts to deliver. And we would ask that you grant his application and rezon his property, allow him to continue to exist in your city. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
I do have one comment that was phone call from Kyle Smith. He's at 803 10th Street Northwest. And he wanted the record to show that he has no objection.
Does anyone else have anything they'd like to share?
Jerry Byrd, 506 570 Northwest. I didn't see the notice in the paper till last week and I thought, meaning of the future, so I didn't get a chance to prepare too much. I guess I'm not sure if there's legal motors. She said it was kind of abetted that it was on the 27th, but I saw it in the last week's paper, so I'm not sure about that. Anyway, we've had kind of a history in Casson of not spot zoning and I think this is a classic spot zone, the way I see it. I don't know if that's true or not by legal definition, but certainly seems to be spot zoning from what I see. Inappropriate use for location in the residential area. I assume that's one of the few places, directions that Cassons can expand reasonably for residential use. Been a lot of talk about, what do you call it, being a good neighbor, so to speak. I'm not that sure what words he used, but he's been in business since 2010, I think he said. And I've been kind of following that whole property since it was first approved with the CUP. And I've never seen any evidence that he's followed about half of the conditions that were put upon him. He agreed to them. He's got display areas south of the building which are not permitted. There's not 60% trees planted and he's had 10 years to plant 60% of lot and trees. He's parked vehicles that he said would not be parked out in the open and scattered around like the industrial parking area that it is. I don't wish him any bad luck with this business, but I wish he would read the conditions that he agreed to. A meeting not too long ago, I think it was in the last year, some business or person came to the, I don't know if you were the council I was at the meeting at, but they were trying to get a CUP. They said they couldn't get it because they didn't own the property. Owner of the property had to apply for the CUP from what they were seeing at that meeting. The CUP that he has now was submitted to by the previous owner of the property with the understanding that he would buy the property if the CUP was approved. Well, a meeting I was at, like I said with them last year, that was not allowed. I don't know, things changed or what happened, you know, after 2009 or 10, whenever it was. And just a couple of things that were not approved in our Casson based on CUPs or whatever. Train and Child was not allowed to run their school in a, what do you call that, commercial manufacturing zone. Was not allowed. They chose not to allow that. And I don't know how long it's been, probably six, seven, eight years. Casey's gas station businesses wanted to put a new business out there on North Manorville Avenue across from the park for the fairgrounds and that was not permitted. So, there's history of turning down these kind of things where it appears to be spot zoning or not appropriate for the neighborhoods. Okay, thanks.
Hi, Justin V, 807 10th Street Northwest. My, the rear of my property about Jason's where the berm is that goes up. And I guess I don't have a problem with the way Mr. Wilker's been operating there. One of my, I guess, questions would be, and you have to forgive my ignorance, when a property would get been rezoned to this M1, if I'm correct on that, how does that change the use of the property? And if Mr. Wilker were to not operate his business there in years to come, what does that mean for that property as to how it can be used in the future?
I've got a list here, sir, that shows you the permitted uses and the conditional uses and I can make a copy if you'd like afterwards from perhaps one of those as well. There's quite a list here, sir. It would take me a while to read it to you.
Do we have any more comments? If we have, if not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you all. Governor Moore would like to start on this particular request.
One of the drawings shows that it's two pieces of property. Is that still the case? Or has it been a giant of the one piece of property?
I believe it's always been one parcel of property, but it was split into two by the county assessor for taxation purposes. And the county assessor then took care of that at Mr. Wilker's request, upon the request of the city. That was back in 17, I believe.
That it's two pieces of property?
No, that the county combined the lots for taxation purposes in 2017.
Is it combined for taxation or is it two? Because right now it's showing in some information that I was provided that it's two separate parcels and one of the property lines is running right through the building.
Yep.
I'm trying to make sure. Is that still what's there?
That is no longer there. The red lines are put on the site by the taxation authority. And I haven't checked recently, but I believe they were moved in 2017, late 2017.
Any questions?
No, I'll just start out as always, since we're not sitting here in silence. Per our comprehensive plan, we just approved a rezone that was in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And typically, when we do a rezoning request, it has to be in concert with the comprehensive plan. And seeing how this area is indicated to be a low density residential on our comprehensive plan, the current zoning is appropriate. And with it being currently being appropriate, nurseries are permitted use in that zoning district with a conditional use permit. History aside, if Mr. Wilker wants to continue to operate business, he can reapply for a conditional use permit and continue to conduct business with the approval of that conditional use permit.
So, we're not, excuse me, we're not impeding his business. We are encouraging him to use the conditional use, similar conditional use permit that he had in the first place. And I think all of us have stated that we would be willing to work with him.
Yep, and the current request for an M1 is not in concert with our comprehensive plan. So, I don't think it is appropriate and I don't think it would hold. And I don't think it would hold up to legal challenge.
Some of the more interesting, and these are all conditional uses of an M1 zoning, auto reduction yards and recycling center, grain elevators, commercial laundries, fertilizer manufacturer, storage and sales, manufacture of candy, cosmetics, drugs, mining, excavation or extraction of sand rock or related, which I assume to be a gravel pit. And I guess, we're not talking about those activities today, but should Mr. Wilker decide to sell his property to somebody that wants to pursue these things, there is a mechanism that would allow them to pursue them. And I don't know how well they would sit up against a residential property.
We do have our city attorney present. Melanie, would you like to comment on the legal challenge of if there was an M1 that doesn't align with the comprehensive plan?
Certainly. Specifically, our ordinance that authorizes the city to make amendments to the zoning plan does specifically say that they should only be used as a means to reflect changes in the goals and policies of the city as reflected in the comprehensive plan. Therefore, I think that there would be an issue with rezoning this to an M1, to go from residential to an M1 district. And the point made, you know, in doing a rezone, the city, if someone, if Mr. Wilker were to sell the property at any point in the future, and whoever buys it, those conditional uses that would be allowed, like a fertilizer plant, someone buys that property for a fertilizer plant and applies for a conditional use permit, they're going to be allowed to operate a fertilizer plant right next to that residential district. So I would be very concerned. I would strongly recommend against the zoning amendment. What is a more appropriate route for Mr. Wilker? Would be a conditional use permit. That way, the city can be, he can still operate his business substantially the same manner that he's been operating. However, the city would, if the use were to change, the city still has some control over that. Whereas with a rezone, the city has little to no control over, you know, those kinds of industrial activities moving into that adjacent property. So I do have those concerns. And I would note that the city has been asking Mr. Wilker to apply for a new conditional use permit since April of 2018. He's done so on a couple of occasions, but has withdrawn both of those applications through his attorney. So per exhibit 20, showing that Mr. Wilker has, you know, these are all the things that the city has asked him to do. Well, that since, for more than a year, the city has been asking him to apply for that new conditional use permit. Like I said, he's done that. The city went through the hoops of having the notice published, sending out notices to the adjoining, you know, property owners. And at the last minute, on both of those occasions, Mr. Wilker, through his attorney, has withdrawn those requests.
Somewhere along the way, I believe, and feel free, anyone, to correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wilker went from running a nursery, at least as presented to us, to running a landscaping company. I don't know if you can run a landscaping company in an R1 district.
That's correct.
So if we need to rezone this, and it may be a bit of a stretch, if we need to rezone it to something, I guess I would start looking at the other option, which I believe would be CN.
I don't, oh, it would be a conditional use from CN. He would need both a rezone and a conditional use permit.
And if we need to rezone it to CN because of circumstances, we still have the conditional use permit to manage what happens there should Mr. Wilker leave. We can, in theory, build in conditions to address that set of circumstances. I'm not blind to the history of this chunk of land. To best of my knowledge, there has always been some commercial activity on this chunk of land. It got rezoned R1 because it was annexed into the city. I'm not a fan of spot zoning. But I'm not blind to, again, the history of what has happened on this chunk of land. And I have no interest in chasing Mr. Wilker out of there.
Again, I mean, that doesn't fit our comprehensive plan.
You're right. And I'm not trying to argue that.
So it fits the same legal challenge to make that work. It may be easier for him with the fact that he says he continues to sell trees and shrubs to continue to expand that component of his business to be in consideration of a nursery, along with the landscaping that he's doing.
And I'm not a person to say this is what a nursery is defined as and this is what a landscaping company is defined as. I'm not trying to have that argument.
Would I be permitted to speak quick? I don't have a lot to say.
Sure.
You keep talking about, you know, your plans and you have to meet these plans. It just seems to me, on the same road, you've got landfill, you've got a gravel quarry. What does his landscaping nursery really hurt there?
It doesn't hurt anything. It's always been a commercial business there. You know, it seems to me that you've got great glorious plans for huge residential development through there. People don't want to live next to the gravel quarry in the landfill. I think you're overvaluing this piece of property and you're causing a great big rigmarole where there shouldn't be one. Really, it's not that special of a piece of land. It's down the road from the landfill. It's down the road from a gravel quarry. Come on. Let's just think like rational good beings and not be so worried about trying to shove a businessman out who just works his ass up trying to do good for the community. Jason's done so much good for this community. Donates to everything, to the fairs. Has his equipment in the parades every year. I mean, he does everything, throws candy out to the kids. He does so much for this community. And the community is not treating him fairly, for lack of a better word I'd like to use. Let's just think about this a little bit before you shove a businessman out into the street who's worked so hard to be good for this community, who's tried to help this community.
I'm sorry, sir. Would you please state your name and address for the city clerk?
Steve Aaron Hazel, Nausau, 25145, 750th Street.
First off, the quarry is not always going to be there. There's already plans in the works for ZNR to take it over, build a pond. The landfill will not always be there. It will be there, but it's not going to be a landfill forever. And we have never said that we want to kick Jason out. I myself have talked to him and told him, all he has to do is come and work on the conditional use permit, and he can continue to work. He's been there forever. All we want to do is work with him to get this thing done. We're not kicking him out. We don't want to kick him out.
You can't kick him out right away. You have to go through channels. That's why it takes so long.
All he has to do is submit a conditional use permit and he's back up and good.
You submit, you suspended it before for invalid reasons.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I am going to cut off.
Yes, we're getting the history that's not pertaining to that.
Yep.
Are there any more thoughts, any more questions? Why don't we hold off till after the meeting, sir, to be so kind? Gentlemen? If not, I will look for a motion, please.
Based on the fact that he does not meet the goals of the city as outlined in comprehensive plan, I move to deny the M1 request for the rezone and encourage Mr. Wilker to consider coming to the city with a CUP application.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion, second. Hold on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Zoning is turned down. Do you have anything else for others?
I do not have anything else to add.
Gentlemen, anything else?
Yep.
Go ahead and turn the meeting.